Councilmember Bredegham.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Muñetón.
Here.
Councilmember Arastegui.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dovin.
Present.
And Mayor Klaffenstein.
Here. We will move to the invocation led by our Assistant City Manager, Matt West. Please rise.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we come together for the first meeting of this new year, let us pause for a moment of reflection. We are grateful for the privilege to serve this community and the responsibility entrusted to us. We ask for wisdom in our decision-making, compassion in our actions, and the strength to face the challenges ahead. May we work in unity, with integrity, and with a shared commitment to the well-being of all who call this city home. And lastly, let us pray, let us pray for the countless thousands of our fellow citizens who are enduring the devastating impacts of the recent and ongoing wildfires. To those who have lost homes, loved ones, or have family and friends affected, our thoughts are with you in this difficult time. And we extend our deepest gratitude to the courageous firefighters and first responders who continue to serve with unwavering dedication protecting lives and communities. We ask this in your name, amen.
Mayor Protem, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Please face our flag and raise your hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take your seats.
We have a presentation this evening, item number one, which is a community spotlight in recognition of the goodwill ambassadors representing Anyang, Republic of Korea. Do we have a report on this?
Yes, tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize 10 high school students and two chaperones representing Anyang, Republic of Korea, as part of the 36th Annual Sister City Exchange Program. Would the students please come up to the podium? For several years, the Sister City Association of Garden Grove has deepened the city's appreciation of and ties with the Republic of Korea. Through the Sister City Exchange Program, Anyang's youth have a unique, unique opportunity to learn about American culture firsthand. They see Southern California's beautiful sights, but more importantly, experience its warm hospitality. The students, along with the chaperones, are serving as Anyang's goodwill ambassadors throughout their nine-day stay. During their visit, they will be staying with local host families who have graciously opened their home and hearts to host them. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of the students and chaperones with a City of Garden Grove tote bag filled with city souvenirs as a memento of their visit. Our city warmly welcomes you to Garden Grove, and we hope your trip will be memorable.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. I think we have some other ones down here. Who else needs one? You got some down here?
Team for you guys. You're very welcome. We want to take a photo, please. Right here first, one. Right here, right here. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. This is a video, so. Okay, ready, go. Yay, Anyang! Okay, thanks. Couple shots right here, please. One, two, three. Thank you. One more. Thank you.
Thank you. I text you guys later. All right, at this time, we'll move into oral communication. I do have several pink cards here. If you can, when you address the podium, please state your name and your council district, if you know it. I would appreciate that. Yes.
May I ask if we can pull item two from the agenda?
Oh, we're going to do that now. Very good. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
We are going to pull item number two, which is adoption of a proclamation recognizing January 13th as Korean-American Day in Garden Grove. Do I have a motion? A motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
I'm going to ask to redo the voting here. We need to vote on item two. Member Muñetón? Motion received, seven yes votes. And Assistant City Manager will read the proclamation.
We actually have Consul Junghee Moon from the Korean Consulate General to receive the proclamation today. January 13th, 1903 marks the day the first group of Korean immigrants came to the United States in Honolulu, Hawaii on the SS Gaelic. On January 13th, 2003, United States President George W. Bush proclaimed the 100th anniversary of the arrival of the first Korean immigrants to the United States. And in 2005, the United States Congress unanimously passed resolutions to recognize Korean-Americans who have made significant contributions to economic vitality in the United States. Since then, states across the country have declared January 13th as an annual celebration of Korean-American Day. This year marks the 122nd anniversary of the first Korean arrival and the 22nd anniversary of Korean-American Day in the United States. And the year 2025 is the 72nd anniversary of the United States and the Republic of Korea's security alliance. Today, more than 2 million Korean-Americans call the United States their home, and in Garden Grove, our Korean-American community is prominent and vibrant. The city is very proud of the professional and cultural contributions made by Korean-American business owners and residents in Garden Grove that have helped enrich our community, community's cultural diversity. Garden Grove's 36-year sister-city relationship with Anyang, Republic of Korea, was built on mutual respect and admiration for our respective cultures. The Korean-American Federation of Orange County and Korean-American Chamber of Commerce of Orange County have been integral in making Korean-American business owners and residents in Garden Grove become productive and proud citizens. Now, therefore, the Garden Grove City Council do hereby proclaim January 13th, 2025, as Korean-American Day in Garden Grove, and do hereby recognize the contributions made by Korean-Americans and encourage all citizens to celebrate our community's vibrant diversity.
At this time, we'll move on to oral communication. As I mentioned before, I was jumping the gun, I apologize. We have several cards. If you can, when you, please come to the podium. If you could state your name and your council district, as I mentioned, if you know it, I would appreciate it. And we will start with Mona Marche.
My name is Mona Marche. I do not know my district.
It's okay.
Madam Mayor, council members. There is something that really worries me. Every time I travel on Gilbert between Chapman and Walmart Way or Loxbury, there's always almost an accident, and I have witnessed a couple of accidents. People just have to use that other lane to pass everybody else. They don't care how close they are, or what they do, or if they push in, or speed. And I'm afraid one of these days, a bicyclist is going to get hit, and that will be really bad. My suggestion, I don't really know much about how things work, but my suggestion is, ever since they changed that street from Chapman to Cotella, there's a huge median, big yellow lines, wasted space. Nobody uses it. And during rush hour, the traffic between that and Cotella, it's heavy on the north side of the median. The south side is okay. It doesn't need to be changed, but the north side, it could use to have that made into a lane, again, as it used to be. I think it would be a lot safer. It'd be better for time, for people traveling, and not so nervous, because I've almost been hit a few times. And I have to say, I did get a bit courageous or foolish, and I did try to stop a couple of people from passing me by moving just a little bit over. Not over too much, but just to kind of make them startled that they didn't do it. You know, I just didn't want people to keep getting away with it. But yet, I don't want to be at fault either. So it's getting really bad. And I just think something could be done. It's wasted space in the middle, and it's just an open invitation with the arrow, and one arrow's pointing, pointing in the wrong direction, kind of like to go into, it's just, it's pretty bad. So if something could be done about it, I think it would be for everybody's benefit. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Pineda.
Good evening, women and gentlemen. Yeah, my name's Manuel Michael Pineda. Date of birth, 9/11/67. Born and raised in Garden Grove, California. I was, I came all the way to the top. Yeah, I mean, the City of Garden Grove to sit there and seek assistance for a case number 16-00384-S, Stephanie, Gia, and Gabriel. I spoke with the coroner's office himself and/or the sheriff's department, coroner's offices in Santa Ana. I know how to level the playing field. If I could get some assistance from here, the city hall. Spoke with Ms. Hadad. She's aware of this case number and issue matter at hand that I'm bringing to your attention. We get to sit there and get, Garden Grove Police Department to sit there and go open up the case. He's willing to sit there and hear the evidence, the witnesses, and get her phone number, and get all the pings and all that good stuff, and see who took her to the Garden Grove Hospital, who left her there, who dropped her off. The full investigations, three death certificates. Paperwork's no good. I don't want to get into too much detail, but it's not good. And where's her body? I mean, since 2016. We could imagine what I endured. A good John Grisham book. Yeah, I mean, ugly. Real ugly. I mean, the thing is, what happened? You know, now that I got the green light from the sheriff's department, coroner's office, to find an agency that will open up the case, yeah, I mean, the closed case, that they closed, which is Garden Grove. Yeah, I mean, once they opened up the investigation, the coroner's office and Ana, they should immediately turn it over to the City of Garden Grove. Now, we have a big problem. Since 2016, I went to all the branches, DOJ's office, FBI, DA's office, coroner's office, everywhere. Yeah, I mean, I endured some ugly stuff. But I want to sit there, because women come first, and she's, we got to get some answers. We got to find out what took place, what happened. Yeah, I mean, how she got to that Garden Grove Hospital, the coroner's office, and then to cross that line all the way to LA. Went to LA, Barbara Rishna Mortuary, a card. I'm still want, you know, I said, unbelievable. And I went to sit there to see who, the receipts, who, the storage, and who paid for the ashes and all that. You know, just a lot of brick walls. Yeah, I mean, but if we could sit there and get some help, yeah, I mean, from here to Ms. Hadad, and I could avoid going to the police department, you know, for the, for the better, for right now, yeah, I mean, you know, because then it's going to level the playing field, because once I get assistance from her, yeah, I mean, my issues, I could sit there and do what I want to do with them. Yeah, I mean, and they're ugly issues, yeah, I mean, that I ended up in the hospital. Yeah, I mean, so I'd rather avoid going there, you know, for the, just for now. Yeah, I mean, let's get answers for my wife. Yeah, I mean, and with, I'm secondary. Yeah, I mean, but let's, let's, let's step up. Let's, let's look at the video. I want to sit there, I went to City Hall in Santa Ana. I want to get it on Spectrum III, because it took place in Santa Ana. But if we could sit there, we could all put our hands on, on deck, you know, I mean, all boots on deck, and, you know, that closed case, that cold case, man, it's ugly. Terrible. Yeah, I mean, the paperwork all the way down the line, even with Christopher Doan with the Garden Grove Hospital.
Sir?
It's very bad.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a great one. Have a good year. We'll be seeing each other soon.
Nicholas Dibs.
Mayor Klaffenstein, members of the council. This is your first full meeting as the new council, and I'd like to bring up a couple items for your, well, first off to the mayor. I'd like to ask the mayor to please, and the council, to please support allowing people who cannot attend in person to call in, which we did during the pandemic. Give priority to those who are disabled, have a medical condition, and can't be here in person. There are some folks like that that I know who can't physically be here in person. They live in Garden Grove. They want to speak to the council. So prioritize and allow them, first choice, to call in. So Mayor Klaffenstein, will you please support that? I've asked you before, and I'd like you to please institute a policy with the council's permission to allow people to call in who cannot have a medical condition and they can't be here in person, or they're disabled. And then for those who can't be here, but they're not disabled, you could have maybe the first 10 or so allowed to call in if they can't be here in person. So we did this during the pandemic. It wasn't a problem. There wasn't abuse of it. But your goal as a council should be to increase civic engagement rather than not increasing civic engagement. So I ask you to please do that. Second item. I'll be sending you, all of you, an email several years ago. In the past several years, I'd like to ask the council to bring back our youth commission, or what we could call a youth advisory commission of adults as well as youth. Keep the teen collaborative, but this city council back in the 1970s, in the early 70s, adopted having a youth commission. And other cities have that. But the, what we need is to develop more programs, mentoring programs, and so on for the youth. I only have a minute left. I want to bring to the attention of the city my other website, dibsdigitalwellness.org, the importance of protecting the children from the internet, social media. We had a fifth grader commit suicide in October, around October of 2019. And she was attending Hazard Elementary School. She was being bullied on Instagram. We need to avoid this from, there's major problems, as some of you have heard in the news. So some of these, the Surgeon General's reports and other things are at dibsdigitalwellness.org. So those are, those are some items there. It's just important that we, in light of the fires, we don't have enough skilled trade workers, which is what our school district needs to do, is bring back our trades to our 10 intermediate schools, wood shop, metal shop, to our 10 intermediate schools that have been cut for, for over 15 years or so. So we need to bring those back, so we have more, more skilled workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Dawson.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Patty Dawson. I live at 8586 Edgewood Drive. And we are accosted with homeless people. I was on the board of directors for two years and fought, and fought, and fought, and nothing ever happened. And I'm praying with Proposition 36 now, we could get a little relief. These are the issues we face. We just had a break-in on Woodbrook Drive. Frequent vandalism from our property. Unauthorized water shut-offs by the vagrants. They got mad because we put locks on our water, so they wouldn't come over the wall and take it. So they went and turned off the people's water and took the spigot, so they can't turn their water on. And they've taken the light bulbs. They go up on the wall and take the light bulbs out of our, our light fixtures. We've discovered used needles in our common areas. There was a dead body found there last summer. At that time, I thought maybe we'd get a little push with getting something done. Nothing. And then there was, in December, one of the vagrants was cooking, and the fire got out of control. And the fire department came and luckily put it out, which is a big issue for us, too, with the fire. That green belt, that buffer zone, is not maintained, and it is a fire hazard. And there's also where the water drainage ditches. We haven't had rain yet this year, but they throw their garbage in there. They use that like their garbage. So when the rain does come, the water's not going to be able to flow. We live in a flood zone, and I don't have flood insurance. And I feel that whoever's responsible for that piece of property is putting us at risk. And we just can't, we just can't accept it anymore. And they're getting very entitled and scary. Like if I see them walking, what are you looking at? You know? I, I feel like, I, I feel like I should get a gun. And I don't want to get a gun, because I'm too old to start doing gun, gun stuff, and I have grandkids, and, but I'm feeling like if something doesn't happen to protect us, we're going to have to find a way to protect ourselves. So I'm asking you, if you have any suggestions, what I can do as a homeowner to help with this. I'm willing to do whatever it is, except shoot them, because I don't have a gun, but I might get one. No, I'm serious. It's, it's so upsetting. I mean, I've lived in this place since 1986, and it used to be, I raised my family there, and it was safe. Now, when I have my grandsons, I carry my mace with me, taking them to the playground. It's ridiculous, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The last card I have is for Linda Towers.
Yes, I am Linda Towers, and I actually live in the same area as Patty. She just found out we're in District Three. I want to describe a little bit about where the source of our worry is. I've been there for 46 years. We're right adjacent to the 22 freeway. My building and three others have a buffer zone, which is weeds and dirt, and now garbage, that goes straight up to the sound wall of the freeway. And our block wall is tall enough, I can't see over it, and so they feel very invisible. But we have had numerous fires now. We can tell, you can walk out there and see the smoke, and it smells delicious, like breakfast sausage. But there's weeds during the summer. They were taller than me. And now, after this LA thing, it's very frightening, because our buildings have roofs that would just be, like, from here to the door, from, from Amber's. So there's fencing currently that's very weak. Anyone with wire cutters, they frequently cut it. Caltrans or someone comes back. So there is some fencing there. Our homeowners association management company sent a letter, which y'all have, in December, saying that apparently some better fencing has been approved, but it's still not near us. And we're just hoping there's like a timeline. We're right at Newland and the Garden Grove freeway, in that corner. And I look out my upstairs bedroom window, and I see those, lots of people. They're happy to walk on the block wall and, you know, give you the eye. I don't go out by myself at dark, ever. After all these years, I do hope maybe the fencing will help. Got to be harder to get in. That's it.
Thank you very much.
I guess, do you want to copy, or?
You can hand that to our city clerk.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
And we can get that information. We'll have people reach out to you. Thank you for your time. Those are all the pink cards.
Member Bredegham.
Here.
Member Nguyen. Member Tran.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Arastegui.
Here.
Vice Chair Muñetón.
Here.
And Chair Klaffenstein.
Here. I was just going to say, who's the chair of this thing? We have two items on the agenda for this successor agency, which is receive and file the minutes of the meeting held on December 10th, and an adoption of a resolution approving the organized obligation payment. Do we need to take these one at a time, or can we take them together? Okay, so we'll take them together. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the vote. Any matters?
Motion received, seven yes votes. Thank you.
Any matters from successor agency members? Anyone? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and return back to our city council meeting. And we will move back into consent. We have the balance, items three through seven. I'll entertain a motion unless someone would like to pull an item. Mm-hmm, yes, please. Okay, we'd like to pull item eight, so I'll take a motion on the balance.
Item eight is a public hearing.
Oh, it's not on, yeah, no, item eight's a public hearing. So you're okay. So we can just, we'll, we'll move forward with consent, and then we'll do public hearing after we finish consent. Yes. And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Now we're moving on to our public hearing item. Yeah.
So this evening, for item eight, we do have a public hearing. It's adoption of a resolution denying an appeal filed by Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SECAFER, and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve Site Plan Number SP-145-2024 and Lot Line Adjustment Number LLC-033-2024. This item was continued from the December 10th, 2024 city council meeting. And Director Nikki Wetzel is here to provide or introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This item tonight will be presented by Mary Martinez in Urban Planning in the Planning Services Division of the Community Development Department.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a request to conduct a public hearing to consider an appeal requesting that the city council consider modifying the Planning Commission's decision to approve Site Plan Number SP-145-2024 and Lot Line Adjustment Number LLC-033-2024 for a proposed 98-unit apartment complex on a 1.35-acre site located at 9891, 9897, and 9901 Garden Grove Boulevard. As a public agency, the city is required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA for short. The city reviews proposed development projects and determines whether CEQA applies on a project-by-project basis. If CEQA applies, the city, with the support of technical consultants, determines which level of CEQA compliance is required. There are four main types of CEQA compliance. First, the city might determine that a project is subject to CEQA, but that one of CEQA's many exemptions apply. Once it is decided that an exemption applies, the review process is concluded. If an exemption does not apply, the city prepares an initial study and determines whether a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or environmental impact report is required. Here, the city determined that the proposed project qualified for the Class 32 CEQA exemption that applies to infill development projects. To qualify for the Class 32 exemption, a project must meet several criteria. The project must be The project must be consistent with the applicable general plan designation and policies and applicable zoning designation and regulations. The project's site must be located within city limits on a site of no more than five acres and must be substantially surrounded by urban uses. The site must not have any known value as habitat for endangered, threatened, or rare species. Project approval must not result in any significant traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality impacts. City must determine that the project's site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. And finally, no exceptions to the exemption apply. When a CEQA determination is made by a non-elected decision-making body, such as the Planning Commission, CEQA permits an appeal of the, of that determination to the city council. Here, the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as SAFER, appealed the Planning Commission's determination that the proposed project qualifies for the Class Thirty-two exemption. Instead, SAFER argues that an initial study must be prepared and that either a mitigated negative declaration or environmental impact report is required to address the project's alleged significant impacts. As to the proposed project, the applicant filed a land use application for city approval of a site plan and a lot line adjustment for property located on the north side of Garden Grove Boulevard between Galway Street and Booker's Way, on a site currently improved with a vacant auto brake and alignment shop formerly operated by Vody's Alignment and Brakes. The site plan approval would authorize the construction of a ninety-eight-unit multiple-family residential apartment complex with associated site improvements, and the lot line adjustment would authorize removal of an existing lot line for the purpose of consolidating the two parcels into one parcel to accommodate the development. The project was submitted pursuant to state and city bonus law and provides ten deed-restricted very-low-income units in exchange for concessions and waivers of development standards and reduced parking to facilitate the development. A detailed explanation of the project is included in the Planning Commission staff report that has been provided as an attachment to the city council memo. The proposed renderings of the project are shown on the slide before you. And in summary, the project consists of the following. Eighty-eight market-rate apartments and ten apartments reserved for very-low-income households. The project meets the requirements for parking, private and common open space, and amenities. The building is seven stories total, consisting of two at-grade garage levels with five stories above with units. And the architecture is contemporary with varied architectural articulation, along with changes in materials, colors, and detailing. At the time of application, the applicant contended that the proposed project is categorically exempt from, from more detailed review under CEQA pursuant to Section One-Five-Three-Three-Two of the State CEQA Guidelines, infill development projects. In support of this contention, the applicant provided an environmental information form and an exemption justification memo, along with supporting technical studies. City staff concurred that the Class Thirty-two CEQA exemption applies and recommended that the Planning Commission approve the project. The Planning Commission held a duly notice public hearing on October third, twenty-twenty-four, and neither SAFER nor any members of the public submitted letters or spoke in opposition of the project. The Planning Commission voted five-oh, with two commissioners absent, to adopt a resolution determining that the proposed project was categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to the Class Thirty-two exemption, making certain findings and approving the requested site plan and lot line adjustment land use entitlements. On October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, the city clerk received an appeal from SAFER. SAFER objects to the Planning Commission's determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA review based on the Class Thirty-two categorical exemption, asserts that the Class Thirty-two exemption does not apply, and requests that the city require an initial study be conducted and a CEQA document prepared to analyze and mitigate the project's environmental impacts. No additional supporting information or justification for the appeal or its request was provided by SAFER at that time. The city originally noticed the hearing for the appeal for the December tenth, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting. On December fifth, twenty-twenty-four, the city received a letter from SAFER with technical comments in support of its appeal while the meeting had already been noticed. The appellant agreed to continue the hearing to today's meeting to allow the applicant additional time to provide a response to the comment letter received by SAFER. On January seventh of this year, twenty-twenty-five, the city received detailed technical responses to the SAFER letter from the applicant. The city has reviewed and analyzed the SAFER letter and the applicant's response. Following this review, staff concluded that the Class Thirty-two exemption applies to the project, and its recommendation to deny the appeal is unchanged. Staff would like to note that pursuant to the Garden Grove Municipal Code, all decisions of the Planning Commission are appealable to the city council. However, the code provides that purpose, that the purpose of an appeal of a hearing decision, hearing body decision, is to allow an applicant or an interested party of a land use action who feels aggrieved by the decision. SAFER did not articulate how or why it is an interested party when it filed its appeal. In addition, a decision of a hearing body on a land use action may be appealed by an individual. SAFER is a nonprofit organization, not an individual. Therefore, SAFER lacks standing under the Garden Grove Municipal Code to appeal the Planning Commission's approval of the proposed project. However, CEQA independently authorizes any person or entity to appeal a determination by a non-elected decision-making body, such as the Planning Commission, that a project is not subject to CEQA to the agency's elected decision-making body, such as the city council. Therefore, the city's council's review and consideration of the appeal is limited to whether the Planning Commission's determination of the project is exempt from review under CEQA pursuant to the Class Thirty-two exemption was correct. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council take the following action. Open the public hearing, take public testimony, and deny the appeal. This concludes staff's report, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would welcome any council questions of staff before we open the public hearing. Mayor Potem.
Thanks for the presentation.
Question is, are we able to disclose who the project developers are?
Yes.
I just want to know, in case I have any conflict, I'll have to recuse myself.
The applicant for the project was Bill Jager?
No, no, not for the appeal, for the original development project.
Yes, his name is Bill Jager. He was the applicant for the project.
Oh, okay. I don't know him. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor?
One second. Please.
If I may. So my question is, how many of the proposed units would be affordable?
Yes, so the, the project total count is ninety-eight units. Ten of those units would be for very-low-income households.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Yeah, and I know, when you go to page thirty, I think it was, of the Planning Commission's report, there's that color map that shows the location. And on the lot line adjustment from that map, it appears that it's being moved only, like, half of the other property. I just, I just want to clarify that it, it's encompassing the entirety of the other planet, property, because it looks like there's going to be a small little strip of undeveloped land as a result of this project, but I don't believe that's the case. And so I just wanted to put that on record or at least get a comment of.
Currently, those are two separate parcels. You can see here on the vicinity map on the left-hand side of the screen before you. One of those parcels is larger than the other, but the project will encompass both parcels. And so the lot line adjustment would consolidate those two parcels in their entirety.
Went to the right of it, of the subject site?
It's both of the ones that are highlighted in the darker shade of blue.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I see. So the property, right where the orange line is, to the right of that, that's a different property.
That is a separate property. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted that clarified. It looked on that map that was on that, that little strip between the homes and that property was not part of it. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Have any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Then with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do have two pink cards. The first speaker would be Victoria Yunt. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Tell me about it perfectly. Good evening, Mayor and honorable city council members. My name is Victoria Yunt, and I am an attorney with the law firm, Lazo Jury, and I'm here on behalf of Appellant Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. SAFER respectfully requests that its appeal be granted and that the city council not approve the project because it does not qualify for the Class Thirty-two infill exemption. Instead, SAFER requests that the city council direct city staff to prepare a mitigated negative declaration or environmental impact report to ensure that the project complies with CEQA. A project does not qualify for the infill exemption if it will result in a significant noise or air quality impacts. The project here will have significant noise and air quality impacts, and thus, it prevents reliance on the infill exemption. SAFER's air quality expert found that the project's air quality analysis failed to consider the health risk from emissions of diesel particulate matter, or DPM, which is a toxic air contaminant. SAFER's air quality expert calculated the health risk that would result from the project's diesel particulate matter emissions and found that the project's cancer risk would exceed the cancer risk threshold set out by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Additionally, SAFER's air quality expert found that the project's air quality analysis failed to consider the significant health risk associated with indoor emissions of formaldehyde, a known human carcinogenic. SAFER's expert found that, for this project specifically, the cancer risk from indoor formaldehyde emissions would exceed the South Coast Air Quality Management District's cancer risk threshold. This significant cancer risk would impact future residents of the project, thereby precluding the use of the Class Thirty-two infill exemption. Lastly, SAFER's noise expert found that the project's noise report underestimated construction noise impacts. When SAFER's expert properly calculated the project's construction noise level, they found that the noise level exceeded the applicable CEQA noise threshold. Specifically, the project's noise report stated that it measured the construction noise from a distance of eighty-two feet. However, the calculations provided show the construction noise was actually measured from further away at a distance of two-hundred-and-fifteen feet. When SAFER's expert calculated the noise level from eighty-two feet, they found that the noise level exceeded the noises, reports, predictions, and the applicable CEQA threshold because there's a significant noise impact and because that's substantial evidence from our expert that also precludes the use of the Class Thirty-two infill exemption. For these reasons, SAFER again respectfully requests that the city council grant the appeal and refrain from approving the project due to its significant noise and air quality impacts. Thank you so much for your time and consideration this evening. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them to the best I can.
Thank you. I have another pink card.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Thank you, Mary, for that presentation. I have Bill Jager over here, who's the applicant, along with the owner, who I represent, which is Lodin Real Estate Investments, LLC. And we also have York Engineering, who prepared the technical analysis. And we did go ahead and submit additional analysis to supplement that the Class Thirty-two exemption is appropriate, is legally sustainable, and that there are no significant impacts that would result from this project. This is a ninety-eight dwelling unit project. It also has fifteen percent very-low income. It provides much-needed housing, especially with what we're seeing right now, that there's just this gigantic housing crisis. The project is well-designed. It'll enhance Garden Grove Boulevard with high-quality and pedestrian-friendly design. The applicant, Lodin, they're not a large developer. Like, I assume many of us in this community, they're immigrants from Vietnam. When Christine Bowie, who is one of the principals from Lodin, when she came to this country, she lived in a one-bedroom apartment with seven family members. It's an American success story. They've worked very hard. This is their first apartment project that SAFER is appealing. The applicant, or Lodin, the Bouys, they, they live here in Orange County, and they have businesses here in the city. The appellant is wrongfully using CEQA as leverage for a project labor agreement, and they're holding critical housing hostage for, for their ulterior motives. As you know, there's an emergency going on in Los Angeles where there is this extreme housing crisis. And there, there's going to be a very high demand for labor, and I'm sure that the laborers could go ahead and, and work at high rates as a result of this extreme demand for labor and construction right now. The appellant raised concerns regarding the Class Thirty-two exemption. This provided an opportunity for us to go ahead and supplement the record with additional materials that are obviously part of the record. And so as a response, there is information in the record supplementing the analysis. And based on the entirety of the record, the applicant respectfully requests that the city council deny the appeal. I want to go, I have a few talking points. I'll try to be as, as brief as possible, but I feel, because SAFER especially is here and has not dropped their appeal, that it's important that we go ahead and, and address a number of the points that are on the appeal. SAFER has not demonstrated any interest in the city. Their headquarters are in West Covina. Their law firm is out of Oakland, and they failed to establish any ties to the city that's required under the municipal code. The municipal code, it's Section nine-point-three-two-point-one-one-oh, requires an applicant or an interested party to seek additional review. There is no information that any of their members live, work, and recreate in the city. The appellant said that all three happened, and there's not a scintilla of evidence to support that assertion. SAFER is also interested in extracting labor concessions. They're known to go ahead and, and exploit CEQA to secure project-related labor agreements across the state. In our January seventh letter, we included extensive correspondence about their ulterior motives. We request that the city view SAFER's appeal through a lens of skepticism. With respect to the project, fifteen percent affordable housing is huge. It is a significant financial burden for the project. Currently, the city has arena obligation, regional housing needs, allocation of over four-thousand very-low-income units. The city has, as of last month, not produced or permitted, which is like building permit as opposed to approval, any very-low-income projects or any very-low-income units. So the demand is significant. This appeal would stop this critical housing from going forward. And so it shows that there's a dire need for this housing, as well as the extremely challenging financial conditions facing developers right now with already high costs of construction, high costs of labor, high costs of land. SAFER, SAFER's appeal jeopardizes this project that includes really-well-designed housing, mostly market rate, but including affordable housing. The project meets all the requirements for a Class Thirty-two infill exemption. There is substantial evidence supporting all the criteria for the exemption, and there are no unusual circumstances. And I don't want to go into too much of the detail, bore you too much, with showing how the project does qualify, but the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning designation. The development occurs within a city limits of no more than five acres. The project's site is not habitat for endangered species. The project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and the site can be adequately served by required utilities and public services. SAFER only disputes one criteria, which is SAFER only disputes one criteria, which is, as you heard earlier, about air quality and noise. We've got our technical expert over here, Tin Chung, who can more specifically address it, and I'll try to move through this fairly quickly. We have submitted substantial evidence supporting the fact that there is no significant impact associated with the project's air quality emissions and noise. And SAFER has not demonstrated that there are any unusual circumstances related to the project to defeat this categorical exemption. There is nothing unusual about the site. It's on Garden Grove Boulevard. It's flat. It's eighty-two feet away from the nearest residential dwelling units. There's a large surface parking lot about a hundred feet away across Garden Grove Boulevard. And there are mixed-use projects being developed along Garden Grove Boulevard. And so, we've talked a little bit about substantial evidence. And I think at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Tin to go ahead and address the factors associated with why there is substantial evidence to support the conclusions in the Class 32 exemption.
Thank you, Ryan. My name's Tin Chung. I'm a resident of Arcadia. I work for York Engineering. We prepared the environmental analyses for this project. I have over thirty years of experience conducting CEQA analyses, including air quality and noise analyses. Our firm has approximately sixty air quality scientists and engineers, so... And we've been conducting these types of analyses for over two thousand clients. In terms of the comments raised by SAFER and SWAP, we took a good amount of time to scrutinize it and see if they, it actually had merit. We found that the issues brought up were easily explained. In terms of noise and vibration, the construction noise distance that was mentioned was eighty-two feet. That was a typo. That's at the edge of the property line, right adjacent to the nearest off-site residential uses. The proper distance, so that was a typo. The proper distance to assess it is at the center of the project site. So it takes into account the different movements of construction activities and gives a more accurate representation of what the average noise levels are. And when the average noise levels are used, it falls below the noise thresholds established by the Federal Transit Administration. The city itself doesn't have any specific noise level limits for construction because most cities recognize that construction is noisy. But they tolerate it because it's temporary, and they relegate it, they isolate it to the least noise-sensitive portions of the day. So you don't have construction noise occurring at ten PM or three AM, you know. They have it during normal business hours where people are more tolerant of that. So, when it was, when construction noise levels are assessed at the center of the project site, which it'll occur for the majority of time, they're below the noise thresholds. Also, vibration was brought up in the written comments. And my responses, York Engineering's responses are all detailed. And I'm gonna go through it relatively quickly because, you know, for the sake of time. Vibration dissipates extremely readily with distance. Generally, if you get beyond fifteen feet, there won't be any vibration impacts relative to building damage. And all the equipment were found to be below, with the exception of vibratory rollers. And vibratory rollers aren't, we don't know if they're going to be used at this point in time, but there's California Civil Codes that prohibit damage to off-site structures. So, the project developer, the contractor, and the grading contractor, they're compelled by law not to damage off-site structures. You can't just damage off-site buildings. So, they'll find a way to construct the project without damage, as required by law. In terms of health risk, the analysis conducted by SWAP and SAFER used assumptions that were not consistent with the methods published by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. They used modeling methods, which were inaccurate, some of which includes... So, most of the health risk is from diesel exhausts, from construction activities. You know, diesel isn't healthy. However, their analysis included emissions from gasoline, and they lumped it into the diesel emission calculations, which is not correct because gasoline isn't as carcinogenic or cancer-causing as diesel is considered. So they did that. They also lumped in emissions from worker trips occurring up to twenty miles away, and they said it occurs at the project site, which is inaccurate, you know. And as I, so they overstated their emissions. In addition, their computer model, they didn't do it consistent with SEACMD methods. And when we did revise it to be consistent with how the air district does it, it was below the significance threshold adopted by the air district. So, there wasn't excessive cancer risk. This is a mid-sized project. There's nothing special about it. Emissions controls, as for anyone who has lived in Southern California, we know that air pollution is getting cleaner and cleaner. Our cars are getting cleaner, our trucks are getting cleaner, and construction vehicles are getting cleaner. The Caterpillar dealership has rent out the most clean engines, Tier Four off-road engines, and they don't have any dirtier engines as required by the California Air Resources Board. So, we are progressively getting cleaner, and this project is no different. They're going to use construction equipment that's available within the state. So, you know, they're starting to phase out the dirtier equipment. So, yeah, there won't be excessive cancer risk associated with the project. In terms of indoor air quality and formaldehyde, formaldehyde is an issue with building products. There's formaldehyde in each of our homes, simply because they off-gas and they pollute. Even new cars, the new car smell, there's VOCs coming off of that. Eventually, they fade, just like the new car smell. If they open windows, you know, clean air comes in, then after a while, it just falls into background concentrations like we experience in our own houses. So, there's nothing new about that. In addition, CEQA doesn't require, CEQA focuses on the impacts of the project on off-site uses, the off-site environment. CEQA doesn't require us to evaluate the effects of the project on future project residents. So, this isn't really even a CEQA issue. But in terms of formaldehyde, it's not much of an issue, simply because everyone experiences it, unfortunately, and it degrades over time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
And if I may, Ryan Liederman, for the record, again, one comment was raised about mechanical fans coming from the garage. The garage is open on three sides, so there aren't mechanical fans. So, in any case, we just hope that, on behalf of the ownership, Christine and her husband Lynn, who are behind this project, that you deny the appeal so that housing, much-needed housing, could go ahead and be built in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll ask the appellant if they have any rebuttal.
I don't have any rebuttal because our experts are here, and unfortunately, they didn't have time to look at what they wrote in response to ours, so I won't speak to the experts. But if you do have any questions that are more technical and expert, I would be happy to reach out to them.
No, we're gonna actually, let me get to the public opportunity for comment, and then we'll get back to that discussion in just one second.
But my only rebuttal is to say that SAFER is not against affordable housing. SAFER is merely asking that the city does the environmental, the appropriate environmental review. We do have substantial evidence from three different experts showing that there will be significant air quality and noise impacts, which requires that there's an initial study followed by some type of environmental document, either a negative declaration or environmental impact report. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. At this time, if there's any members of the public wishing to speak, I would entertain that at this time. All right, seen none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and now will be an opportunity for council discussion and then action. Let me start with...
Yes.
For Ms. Yant, is that right?
Yes.
May we invite you, Ms. Yant, for a question?
Yes, if there's questions, it is appropriate to ask them at this time. Maybe reopen the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll reopen the public hearing, and our mayor pro tem has a question. Thank you.
Just one question. You may or may not answer it. It's entirely up to you, but the appellant mentioned you're holding out for a favorable labor condition. They haven't presented proof, but I wanted to give you a chance to answer to that.
I have nothing to say to that. I honestly don't know what they're talking about. We have members, SAFER has members that work and live in the city, and they are asking for there to be an appropriate environmental review. And that's the best that I can answer to that. Otherwise, I have nothing to say on that.
That's great. I just have one question. It's not a follow-up. It's very different. And that is, you've heard the appellant. Their attorney or their applicant said that, in fact, if this, if we turn down you as the appellant, then it will help them move forward. But if we vote up your appeal, it might kill their project. What do you say to that?
Again, I, we're not saying that we don't want this project to be built. That's not what we're saying at all. What we're saying is that there needs to be appropriate environmental review. And if that means that the city has to go back to the drawing board, do the correct CEQA review, that's not killing the project. It's just, from what SAFER sees and their members see, it's actually helping the community. It's helping the environment, and that's what CEQA is for. It's not trying to kill housing. It's not trying to kill development. It's just making sure that the appropriate environmental review is conducted so down the line, there aren't significant air quality impacts. And if there are, then there's mitigation that's put into place. That's what CEQA is for. It's to mitigate these impacts. But when you do something like a CEQA infill exemption, there is no mitigation. And there's clearly, from our experts, there is significant air quality, and there's significant noise quality, I mean, noise impacts. And that's what CEQA is there for. So if you went back to the initial studies, saw what we are seeing, then you could mitigate those impacts to less than significant, which CEQA requires. With an infill exemption, that will not happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does member Breitman?
Yeah, and this probably goes to the applicant. A quick question. If this appeal should be denied tonight, would, how soon would you be able to start construction, and when would the projected construction end?
Honorable Councilmen, I don't have the timing as to when they're able to do it. They would have to go through plan check, prepare construction drawings, retain the contractor. So, I don't have a firm timeline as to when that would happen.
You got an approximate guess?
Probably within about a year.
Okay, about a year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the second question goes to staff, I guess, on the conditions of approval, approved by the planning commission. Were, are there any mitigation efforts currently in the conditions of approval on air quality or noise or anything like that, construction times, that kind of thing?
Normally, when you have an exception, there are no mitigation measures. So, there would be conditions of approval in order to meet code requirements, but there would not be any mitigation measure related to CEQA.
Okay.
I have two things. So, one is for the applicant. Earlier, you mentioned about the equipment will not have any impact on your vibration and things like that to the building nearby. When you talk about that, were you just talking about general, or did you look at the equipment that planned, you know, whoever, the contractor or the builder that you use it, you checked with them? Or how did you come up with that result?
Federal Transit Administration has established methodologies for assessing vibration impacts to off-site buildings. The off-site buildings that we've analyzed are both the residences, which are located much further away, at about eighty-six feet, eighty-two feet. And they definitely won't be affected because most equipment aren't in issue at fifteen feet. So, eighty-two feet is well far enough away. There's parking structures, just carports, right close to the property line. So, you know, that's what we focused on, in addition to the residential buildings. And the, we did consider all the construction equipment types that are provided within the Federal Transit Administration's assessment methodology. So bulldozers, jackhammers, and other equipment, so.
That's right, yeah, because I have people were asking me, they have building around it, and so they would just want to make sure that's something that I brought up here. The second thing is for our staff, probably kind of go along with Councilmember Breitman just mentioned. So for our staff, you hear, you know, audit, and you probably review all the documentation. Did you have any concern, anything that you want us to pay attention to, or you review, you got?
Staff has reviewed the comment letter, as well as the technical studies. And staff is recommending that the planning commission's decision be upheld and deny the appeal.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question for staff, and Mary in particular. And please refresh my memory, because it was a very hefty packet of attachments. But in the process of moving forward with this project, in the planning phase, in the planning commission phase, were there any residents that raised any concerns with regards to this project and wrote in any communications at any point?
No, we did not receive any members of the public during the public hearing speaking in favor or in opposition of this project. We also had a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning commission public hearing. And we only had one member attend, and he just had general questions about the project, you know, projected construction dates, number of units, number of bedrooms per unit, number of parking spaces, things of that nature.
Okay.
But he did not indicate whether he was in opposition or in favor of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Have any other questions?
No, just, you know, a comment if we're moving on to that portion.
I need to close the public hearing. Yes. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and then we'll take comments from council members. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, this is Garden Grove, and to have a project of this size coming in, without any negative community feedback being associated is pretty rare. You know, I haven't, usually when a project this size comes in, I'll get a few emails from some concerned residents and this and that. I didn't get any this time on this particular project. The city really needs low-income housing right now. I mean, as far as helping our community, and this is going to go a long way towards that. I haven't seen anything here that would make me think this project, I would, I would like to see applicant with a little more experience, maybe, is the only negative thing I can say. This is their very first project of this magnitude, from what I'm understanding. So, that gives me a little pause when you got a brand-new developer putting, you know, through. But with that being said, I would like to make the motion to discontinue, or what's the term I'm looking for? I'm sorry, to deny the appeal.
We have a motion. Is there any other conversation or comments by my council members? Otherwise, I'll entertain a second.
I, I do think that as the population in our city keep growing, and I think that the project for low-income housing is very important, so I do want to deny the appeal.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, any further conversation or questions, comments?
I'll go ahead and I'll make a comment. I think it's very important, as my colleagues, George and Philip, had mentioned, you know, we have to weigh some very important factors when we're up here making our votes, and with the very pressing need for us to address housing, especially when we're getting affordable housing at this rate on a project of this magnitude, it's important for us to consider what an impact that's going to have. And having sat on the planning commission when we were going through the entire process of figuring out what the new zoning was going to look like across the city with regards to arena allocations, you know, we really felt the pressure and the burden of having to make some tough choices, and really think big about what our city is going to be looking like in the future. So with that in mind, I also think that it's important to, as we go through these processes, listen to our community feedback, and if we're hearing the voices of our residents coming through with regards to a project, to really place a lot of weight on that, and as George said, to see a project of this scale go by without relatively, you know, there's no, no opposition from the community is very, very, very rare. So this is definitely something very compelling, so I will be supporting my colleagues in their vote.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. I am unable to vote with the screen at this time, could we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Abstaining.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Mayor Protem Dovin abstaining. Motion carries.
Okay, we will move on to commission and committee matters, number nine, which is the consideration of appointments to the audit committee and outside committees, this was continued from the December tenth meeting. I have a list in front of me, I feel we'll go through each one, I apologize in advance, this may be a little clunky, normally this would sort of be a slate of names, we're going to have to go through these one at a time, so I apologize, we'll probably have to vote on these individually. We'll start with the audit committee. I have, for the three representatives, George, Philip, and Cindy, if there's any other discussion on that, or if somebody would like to...
Oh, yeah, I was going to nominate Philip, because he is our accountant at professional...
Yeah, I have him on there.
Perfect for, what better fit, so yes.
Is everyone comfortable with that? I'll entertain a, I had you and Cindy, but if somebody else is willing to take on the role, this is something that meets by recommendation of the finance director, so.
I'm not a bean counter, but, but if you need me to be, I'll be one.
Go.
If somebody else would like to be on that?
Would you like to be on there?
No, I'm going to pass, and I favor one of my colleagues.
All right, then if we can keep George, Philip, and Cindy for that committee, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
Second.
But didn't you make the motion?
I guess I am making the motion, I need a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion in a second, call for the vote.
Member Brightingam?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Member Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We'll move to League of California Cities, I have the representative as Ariana, and the alternate as Cindy Tran. That's my motion, I'll take a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, if they're, if they're good with it, I don't want to push anything on anybody.
We're good, George.
All right.
I would love to support my friend over there, yes.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
The Orange County Public Library Advisory Board, Councilmember Tran, you were sitting as the representative for quite some time, did you have a nomination, or I was wondering if perhaps Philip or Yasenia, are you interested?
I would like to nominate Philip.
Fantastic, okay.
I second that, yes.
Yasenia would be a good, uh...
Would you like to be the alternate?
Because she is a teacher, right?
Yes.
Makes good sense.
I think she's got...
So we had, yeah, Philip and Yasenia Munyaton is our, is the alternate, so we have a, would that be a motion then for both?
Yes, so.
Okay.
May I say something really quick?
Oh, sure, please.
So Yasenia is actually a really good one for you, because kind of related to the school, but also if you look at the meeting, not that many meeting, only three a year, so not that many.
No, and you have the main branch library in your district, so it works out quite well.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
OC Sanitation District, I'm in the middle of my term on that as representative, I'd be happy to nominate Cindy Tran for my alternate, if she's interested.
I would love to.
I'll second it.
Right, motion in a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We'll move on to one of my all-time favorites, the Orange County Vector and Mosquito Control District, served on there as your bug lady for eight years, but it's time to pass the torch. I would, I would be happy to nominate Ariana, Councilmember Ariana Aristegui, for that position, that I believe vector control sits in the fine district six, or right on the border, anyway, of five and six.
Yes, it does sit in the fine district six.
Are you good with it?
Oh, yes.
Second it, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
You know you're going to be the bug lady from now on, right?
By fishing.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We'll move on to Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency, the representative has been councilmember, or Mayor Protem now, Joe Dovin, I'd be happy to nominate you to keep that role, if that's something you're interested in, sir.
As a mayor, can I, can I make a comment? So there's, there's two of these that only affect certain districts, and Joe kind of got it dumped on them, because Kim had a conflict, it only affects the sixth district.
Oh, okay.
It's the, you know, on the Santa Ana River, so I think it would be more appropriate to have the council member from the sixth district serving that role, unless Joe really wants to keep going in that.
No, actually, I agree, and I'd second it if...
Okay, yes, sure.
It's an interesting, I did it the first year I was on, and it's very interesting, because you're working really close with a lot of the congresspeople and stuff, so it's one of the unique-in-that-matter type of things, but anyway, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, we'll, we'll call that a motion in a second, then, for, are you comfortable with that? Okay, very good, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
For the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, this is representative, I'd like to nominate Cindy Tran and Ariana Aristegui for alternate.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Moving right along, we have the West Orange County Water Board, I believe with the word west in there, this obviously pertains to maybe, perhaps your...
Yeah, this is the one that only really pertains to the first district, however, there is a pumping station that pumps into the first district that's in the second district on the border, so it's kind of for me to be it, but also for the second district to be the alternate, since it really only kind of affects us.
Is that a motion for...
Can I move myself?
Can you?
Cindy's going to move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, call for the vote.
I'll second. Councilmember Brightingam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
The other three committees that are on here do not require council action, do, should, Omar, should I read those, or can we?
I mean, is that the issue, want to read them, so that the public knows who's the representative?
Sure, sure. Let me, lost my place. The Association of California Cities, Orange County, I am still within my term on that seat, I, in fact, will be ending my presidency, if you will, tomorrow. I was the president for a year and a half on that association, and I will be immediate past president, so still looking forward to contributing to ACCOC. And then the OCOG seat, I believe that is being handled, I believe, if all goes according to plan, Cindy might be an alternate to stay on that council of governments, and then the Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA, I am also in the middle of my term on that as well. So that rounds out our audit committee and outside appointments, again, I apologize for the clunkiness of that agenda item. We will move on to number ten, which is adoption of a resolution appointing a city council member to the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors, I will entertain a motion.
I'll motion to nominate Councilmember Brightingam.
Love to do it.
I would, second that.
I would like to entertain a substitute motion to nominate my colleague Yasenia Munyaton.
We have a substitute motion, is there a second on the substitute motion?
I second.
Okay, so we have to vote on the substitute motion first, so the substitute motion is for Yasenia Munyaton, we will, we have a motion in a second for that, we will call for the vote. Is this working again?
What do we vote?
So we're, first, we're voting for the substitute motion, which is Councilmember Munyaton.
I'll just do it roll call, because...
You want to do roll call? Yeah.
Councilmember Brightingam?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
No.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
No.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
No.
Motion received, we have four no votes, and two yes votes, with Councilmember Nguyen voting yes, Councilmember Aristegui voting yes, oh, I'm sorry, three yes votes, and Councilmember Munyaton voting yes, motion fails, thank you.
And the next one.
So we will, yeah, we'll go to the original motion. We had a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Member Brightingam?
Yes.
Member, Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Munyaton?
No.
Councilmember Aristegui?
No.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Yes.
So for this original motion, we have four yes votes, and two, three no votes, Councilmember Munyaton, Councilmember Aristegui, and Councilmember Nguyen voting no, the motion carries.
Congratulations, councilmember. And with that, with all of these different committees and appointments, please consider when you come back to council meetings after these meetings, to share updates and events and different things that's going on with them, it helps us as councilmembers to know what's going on outside of our city regionally, and also it benefits the public as well, so, thank you all, that was a lot to get through, I appreciate it. At this time, we'll move to matters from council, and I am going to start with the sixth district this evening.
Oh my God, I love this. Hello. Well, first, first I'll say congratulations, George, on your appointment to the fire authority, you've been on council, and I know you're going to do a great job, so, yay. Also, I want to say that I've just, I had a great time over the holidays, and going out and doing events with the community, had a great time at, with OC Autism at their Christmas event, I got to see many of my wonderful colleagues there, and we got to enjoy in celebrating the holidays with the members of our community, so I had a great time, I hope all of you guys also had really great holidays, I'm really glad that we're back and we're ready to get going with all of our business, so that's all I really had to say, I'm excited for all the great things that we have going on.
Thank you. District five?
I hope everybody had a happy holidays as well, and I'm hoping everybody feels refreshed with the new year. I want to let our community know, especially residents of District five, that my bio page and contact information is up on the city website, I want to make sure my constituents know that I am easily accessible, and I have an open-door policy, so feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns. I also want to thank the PIO team for setting up the page promptly, so thank you. And then I also wanted to share, earlier this month, I had the privilege of attending the OC, the Orange County Professional Firefighter Falling Relief Fund fundraiser, it was an honor to support such a noble cause, and stand for those who have put their lives on the line every day to protect our communities. Tragically, the day after that event, the Orange County Fire Authority lost one of their own. Our hearts go out to the families and friends and colleagues mourning for that, their tragic loss. As we all know, several days after wildfires broke out in Los Angeles, devastating communities who continue, are continuing to burn, our amazing Orange County firefighters are currently on the front lines, working tirelessly to aid in containment efforts. To all of our firefighters and first responders, your bravery and dedication do not go unnoticed. On behalf, behalf of the city and District five residents, thank you so much for your service and sacrifice.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem?
I do have an announcement, or Flower Street on Historic Main, that's my district, so I'm very proud to have them, I think this is their second year, but I kind of lost count, I was hoping it's third.
Third year.
The third year?
Third, third.
Okay, yeah, I just remember I was at their public relations event, and it was their first go-around, and very nervous, needed a lot of support, and got a lot of support from our council and then mayor, and so I'm happy to have them back. This year, they're holding it Saturday, January twenty-five, twenty-fifth, from eleven to ten PM, so eleven is, is a good start, and then we want to shut down by ten, so to, out of respect for all the neighbors there, so I think that timing is excellent. Sunday, January twenty-sixth, from eleven AM in the morning, again, to nine PM, so it's even a shorter timeline, and that's good, we should be able to accommodate a lot of people during those open hours, so thank you for the organizers. The event is inspired by the vibrant new year tradition, Lunar New Year of Gwain Hui, Flower Street, I always been there myself, in Gwain Hui, Luangwa, it's a beautiful, beautiful event every year, and aims to bring this cultural celebration to the American audiences, providing a unique experience that showcases the richness of Vietnamese-American culture. This event features a diverse array of attractions and activities, catering to all ages, including beautiful flower decorations, lion dance performances, Auzai festival and contests for adults and kids on January twenty-fifth, Miss Asian Heritage Patent on January twenty-sixth, and other music performances and entertainment. To learn more about these exciting events, please check out the event website at www.vso... at www.vsocal.org. So that's vsocal.org. You can get all their contact information there and post your comments or suggestions. I've been to these events myself, so I recommend it. It's a family event. It's an all-week-long event and there's plenty of parking. You might have to do a little walking, but be respectful of the businesses there. But patronize the event because it really supports diversity in our city and also our way to contribute to the Lunar New Year Festival of the snake this year.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you. I have a couple of things, so probably this is the last time for me to talk about the library. So I want to say a couple of things. I remember when I first became the council member and I didn't know which one to select and that was one that I would nominate for. I really enjoy it. So I do want to say a couple of things about the library activity. I still remember when my kids, my kid were little, two years old or even just walking, we used to go to the get and go library and walking around the pond. So just so you know, for our library, they have activity for not just children, toddler, for, you know, playtime, book reading, but also family activity. They have Lego club, bingo, family game night and a lot of things. And also they have teen craft and then craft for the adult with disability. So that is, you know, a play that anyone could come and enjoy something from the library. And then at the last meeting at the library, they were talking about the one county and one book. So there's many activity that coming up for entire Orange County, but I just want to highlight two. One is there will be a cookbook. The author is Chap Two David Foo on Saturday, January eighteen at eleven AM at Westminster Library, just right here. So everyone, welcome. And then the other one is Kevin Wong, who was the author of Asian... What is it? The Crazy Asian Movie. That movie do very popular and that was one of the international best-selling book. So he will be at the Norman Hatchett Community Center of Costa Mesa on January twenty-ninth at six thirty PM. So everybody, welcome to meet him and get to learn about his book. The second thing, I want to say thank to Community Development Director Nikki, Lieutenant Rick Burizo, Captain Brian Dowton, our court informant Raphael, David Dance, and Ms. Palm Hadat for taking care of the homeless issue at Gilbert and Chapman. So that corner, we heard many times from one of our residents come here almost every week or every meeting relate to the homeless issue. This time, the business owner have problem or concern. So it require many people to support, not just the police, the SRT, and also our court enforcement. We have to do something so that way we could fix the issue. And so our staff spend extra effort and have to come up with some idea so that way we would be able to ask the business around there, you know, give them violation, court enforcement things that way they will fix the problem and so we could move forward. So I just want to say thank you because that area right in my district and right next to District Two. So you probably will hear about that. Kind of relate to that too. That same resident that came here many times and say that I have... I am relate to one of the business or the property owner of the complex right in that corner. But I will ask to make the correction because I do not relate to that owner. I don't know who the owner is, but every time he come here, he always say, oh, that person relate to you, your family. So I just want to make, correct that on the record that no, I do not have any association with the owner over there. Okay, and last but not least, I think there will be a bulky pickup coming up, right? Lisa, could you just give us the date? I think it's coming up or...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay. Or you could talk about that. Because last time, a couple of the resident asking me about that because they were looking forward to that day to drop off the big item. And so I just want to make sure that I brought it up this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman?
First of all, I would like to congratulate council George take on the responsibility for the Orange County Fire Authority. I'm also proud myself to take on the public library and the audit committee. I don't know what that mean yet, but...
Appreciate your honesty. Buckle up.
No, I know what auditing mean, but I don't know how involved me and my city staff at that point. I hope everything nice and peace. Anyway, also, I would like to thank you, city manager Lisa and city attorney Omar. Azula, Lee, Matt, everybody else been supporting me very well and I have in the process learned so much. And also, I hope everybody involved up. We have great time with family on the vacation, on the new year holiday. And in the same time, we also feel sadly for all the disaster that we have been at LA. And we appreciate our fire department work very hard to save people and save the housing and everything over there. And so I pray for everybody in the disaster area safe and proper, hopefully. And at the end, I wish at new year two thousand twenty-five, all of us going to be prosper, harmony, happy and success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Brightigum?
I'm next. Last. Here we go. I like this. It's usually... Usually I got to go first and it's... I like... We got to alternate like this.
Yeah, I'm going to switch it around.
Yeah, this is awesome. Keep us on our toes. Good. Well, first of all, Happy New Year, everybody. I hope everybody had a great time with their families and over the holidays and whatnot. We are gearing up for Lunar New Year now. And just so my colleagues know, I am going... Every year, we make the rounds to the different media outlets and do the New Year's broadcasts and whatnot. I will probably not be able to make it this year to many of these things. My wife is having a hip replacement followed by a knee replacement. So I'm going to be Mr. Mom for a while. So I'm not going to have a lot of free time to go to these events. But with that being said, she should be all recovered by the end of March, hopefully, and I'll be back to normal. So with that being said, the fires in LA, a tragedy of unimaginable proportions. I would just like to take a moment and ask everyone, you know, to step back a little bit, let the process take place. You know, the vile on some people in social media and the screaming and yelling, pointing fingers going on. There's a lot of that and it can be done at any time. But right now, we should just let our victims recover. Let the fire department do their job, support them in every way we can. And when the smoke is cleared, at that point, we can make informed and educated decisions instead of just jumping and pointing fingers and that kind of thing. So I would urge everyone to take a few moments and breathe. As a councilwoman winds it... Or councilwoman, Cindy Tran said, the bulky item drop-offs, they start... I'm really proud of this event. They go citywide and they alternate in every district. So the first one's starting at Pacifica this Saturday, the eighteenth, between nine and eleven. Now, there will be one in every district. However, anybody from the city can attend any of them. So you're not relegated to wait for your district's drop-off. You can go to any of them. The Pacifica one tends to be a little bit bigger because it's right after Christmas holidays and that kind of stuff and a lot of people have bigger items to get rid of. So anyway, from nine to eleven, Saturday, the eighteenth, we partner with Republic Services and they offer this for free of charge for all Garden Grove residents. You should also know that our new contract with Republic allows every resident of Garden Grove to have three free bulky item pickups a year. And that's up to ten items per pickup. So you can call and they'll schedule a time and you don't even have to take it anywhere, just out to your curb and they'll come and pick it up for you. The days of having to sneak off and drop your stuff behind a shopping center or something in the middle of the night, you don't need... It's actually more work than just calling them and telling them to come get it. You know, and so it's kind of silly to be doing that kind of stuff, but people still do. So it's literally free. They come to your house, they pick it up. You don't need to go, you know, sneak off at two in the morning and hide it behind a shopping center. So please utilize that service at Republic. And then lastly, I think we're going to start gearing up for our commission appointments to the city of Garden Grove. And this is a process that, you know, the council generally will make recommendations to the mayor and the mayor has to pull her hair out and try to figure out how she's going to figure it all down and then she's going to come back and make the recommendations to us as a body and then we vote to confer that. If you are a Garden Grove resident or you want to be a member of one of these commissions, now's the time to start sending in those applications. You can go to the Garden Grove City website, fill out the information, go to commissions and then there's like a little button there and you can type, you know, what your experiences are and whatnot. If you're really serious, reach out to your council member in your district that you live in or if you're a business owner, reach out to the council member or the mayor of the district your business is in. And let them know that you're interested because a lot of us, you know, sometimes we don't realize that so-and-so wants to do this or so-and-so wants to do that and so we don't know who to recommend to the mayor. So, you know, reach out. If you're in District Six, you're going to reach out to Ariana. If you're in District Five, you reach out to Yasina. District Four, Joe Dovin and, you know, so on and so on, right? So that way, we know who's in our district and who's interested in what and we can make those recommendations to the mayor. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have a couple of quick comments this evening. One of them would be, I'd definitely be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the fires that are raging in Los Angeles and other areas to our north. I think I speak for everyone that our heart breaks for the loss, not just for the properties, but for the people, the pets, animals, local businesses, the memories and the mementos and the family history that's gone so suddenly. I think the human spirit, though, is truly an amazing thing and it gives us hope and faith in mankind to see the helpers, the volunteers and neighbors all coming together as a community, trying to provide kindness and love and trying to be a light in a very dark time. Garden Grove also has a very big heart and I am very proud of the service groups, residents, schools, little leagues, churches and businesses all pitching in to lend a hand. When the need is great, Garden Grove steps up to answer the call. And from food to toiletries, toys, pet food and monetary donations, I feel that this really does show the character of our community and I want to thank you. I have posted, as I'm sure my colleagues have, information on donating and we will continue to do that. I want to thank the firefighters, those close to home within our OCFA family and those from all over Orange County, LA and really at this point, the entire world. To our law enforcement and first responders, to all of you, thank you so much. This is a grueling fight and we are very grateful. This is also a time for the community to prepare. I've had quite a few residents reach out to me asking, what can I do to prepare my family in case of a natural disaster? What is the city of Garden Grove doing? And we actually have a lot of information and resources for you. Through our EOC, which is our Emergency Operations Center, there is quite a bit of information and preparedness, not only from us as a city, but at the county level. One of those is Alert OC. This system activates during a disaster and sends out emergency notifications to you. That's through calls, texts and emails to every resident, keeping them up to date. And you can find quite a bit of that county response and information at ocgov.com. From our own city website, our police department has emergency preparedness information and important links from the national level all the way down to the local level. OCFA also has a great deal of infographics and step-by-step information on what to do in preparing. A few that I think are worth noting is how to prepare a to-go bag should an emergency arise and also how to create a family disaster plan. And finally, if you want to be more hands-on in helping the community during a disaster, please visit our CERT, which is our Community Emergency Response Team page and you can find all of that information at ggcity.org as well. As a city, I think we need to continue to help one another, make sure that we're educating ourselves on how to be more prepared and continue praying for all affected. Thank you very much. And finally, I want to close the meeting this evening in memory of Denise. Please help me with the pronunciation. Is it Ken?
Keen.
Keen. A former city employee and lifelong resident of Garden Grove. Denise graduated from Rancho Alameda's High School in nineteen seventy-seven and began working for the city in nineteen ninety-nine. She started her service at the Community Meeting Center front desk and was promoted to Department Secretary. In two thousand and eight, she was promoted to Record Specialist in the city clerk's office where she worked until she retired in two thousand and eighteen. Denise could always be counted on to help a coworker, a friend or her family. She's remembered by all as kind. Along with many friends, she leaves behind her mother, brother, sister, daughter Erica Lowry and her one and only granddaughter, Kaya, who just turned one. She will be very missed by those she left behind far too soon and our condolences are with her family at this time. City manager, anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for the remarks in light of these challenging situations in Los Angeles. We send our prayers and thoughts to those families as well. And I just wanted to point, share a highlight. Happy early birthday, Mayor Pro Tem Dovin. I wish you the best birthday month and as it always should be every year, you should celebrate your birthday month with greatness.
Finally, twenty-one, old enough to drink.
Anything from our city attorney this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a need to go into closed session. So we have two items on the agenda and once we're ready, we can adjourn to closed session.
All right. We will go ahead and at this time, adjourn to closed session.